The House will come to order. Motions and resolutions.
Winkler moves that the rules of the House be so far suspended so that House File Number 11 be recalled from the Committee on Health and Human Services Policy, be given its second and third readings, and be placed upon its final passage.
Representative Winkler, to your motion.
Madam Speaker, members, this is the Health and Human Services Policy Bill. This is a voice vote to take it from committee and bring it to the floor.
Any discussion to the motion? Representative Dowd?
I would encourage members to support the motion.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails. The bill is before us.
Pursuant to Article 4, Section 19 of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, Winkler moves that the rule therein be suspended and an urgency be declared so that House File Number 11 be given its second and third readings and be placed upon its final passage.
Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, members, this will be the roll call vote to bring the bill before us. I ask for a yes vote.
Representative Dowd?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Would the Majority Leader yield for a question?
He will yield. Representative Dowd?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Majority Leader, is it the intent to bring this bill up and then amend it by removing Article 9 and then pass it?
Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, Representative Dowd, yes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I would encourage members to support the motion.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, the Clerk will take the role on the motion.
Acem.
Acem, aye.
Acem, aye. Albright. Albright, aye. Anderson.
Anderson, aye.
Anderson, aye. Becker.
Becker, aye.
Becker, aye. Bonner.
Bonner, aye.
Bonner, aye. Barr.
No.
Barr, no. Baker.
Baker, aye.
Baker, aye. Becker-Finn. Becker-Finn, aye. Bennett.
Bennett, aye.
Bennett, aye. Bernardi.
Bernardi, aye.
Bernardi, aye. Bierman.
Bierman, aye.
Bierman, aye. Bowe.
Bowe, aye.
Bowe, aye. Brand.
Brand votes yes.
Brand, aye. Cantrell.
Cantrell, aye.
Cantrell, aye. Carlson, aye.
Carlson, aye, aye.
Carlson, aye. Carlson, L.
Carlson, L, aye.
Carlson, L, aye. Christensen.
Christensen, aye.
Christensen, aye. Claflin.
Claflin, aye.
Claflin, aye. Considine.
Considine, aye.
Considine, aye. Daniels.
Daniels, aye.
Daniels, aye. Dowd. Dowd, aye. Davids.
Davids, aye.
Davids, aye. Daveney.
Daveney, aye.
Daveney, aye. Dean.
Dean, aye.
Dean, aye. Damuth. Damuth, aye. Detmer.
Detmer, aye.
Detmer, aye. Dreskowski. Dreskowski, no. Eklund.
Eklund, aye.
Eklund, aye. Edelson.
Edelson, aye.
Edelson, aye. Elkins.
Elkins, aye.
Elkins, aye. Erickson.
Erickson, aye.
Erickson, aye. Fabian. Fabian. Fisher. Excuse. Fisher.
Fisher, aye.
Fisher, aye. Franzen.
Franzen, aye.
Franzen, aye. Freiberg.
Freiberg, aye.
Freiberg, aye. Garofalo. Garofalo. Gomez.
Gomez, aye.
Gomez, aye. Green.
Green, aye.
Green, aye. Grassl.
Grassl, aye.
Grassl, aye. Grunhagen. Grunhagen. Gunther.
Gunther, aye.
Gunther, aye. Haley. Haley, aye. Halverson. Halverson.
Hamilton.
Hamilton, aye.
Hamilton, aye. Hanson.
Hanson, aye.
Hanson, aye. Hassan.
Hassan, aye.
Hassan, aye. Hausmann.
Hausmann, aye.
Hausmann, aye. Heinrich.
Heinrich, aye.
Heinrich, aye. Heinzmann. Heinzmann. Herr.
Herr, aye.
Herr, aye. Hertas.
Hertas, aye.
Hertas, aye. Hornstein.
Hornstein, aye.
Hornstein, aye. Howard.
Howard, aye.
Howard, aye. Hewitt.
Hewitt, aye.
Hewitt, aye. Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Johnson, aye. Jordan.
Jordan, aye.
Jordan, aye. Jurgens.
Jurgens, aye.
Jurgens, aye. Keel.
Keel, aye.
Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, aye.
Cleavorn, aye. Cagle.
Cagle, aye.
Cagle, aye. Katisa Watun.
Katisa Watun, aye.
Katisa Watun, aye. Koznick.
Koznick, aye.
Koznick, aye. Kresha.
Kresha, aye.
Kresha, aye. Kunish Podeen.
Kunish Podeen, aye.
Kunish Podeen, aye. Lehman.
Lehman, aye.
Lehman, aye. Lee.
Lee, aye.
Lee, aye. Lesch.
Lesch, aye.
Lesch, aye. Liebling? Tim? Excuse? Excused. Lean.
Lean, aye.
Lean, aye. Lily.
Lily, aye.
Lily, aye. Lippert.
Lippert, aye.
Lippert, aye. Listlegard.
Listlegard, aye.
Listlegard, aye. Long.
Long, aye.
Long, aye. Lucero.
Lucero, no.
Lucero, no. Luick.
Luick, aye.
Mahoney.
Mahoney, aye.
Mahoney, aye. Mann.
Mann.
Mann, aye.
Mann, aye. Mariani.
Mariani, aye.
Mariani, aye. Markwart.
Markwart, aye.
Markwart, aye. Mason.
Mason, aye.
Mason, aye. McDonald. McDonald. Mecklin.
Mecklin, no.
Mecklin, no. Miller.
Miller, aye.
Miller, aye. Mohler.
Mohler, aye.
Mohler, aye. Moran.
Moran, aye.
Moran, aye. Morrison.
Morrison, aye.
Morrison, aye. Nash. Nash, aye. Nelson M.
Nelson M, aye.
Nelson M, aye. Nelson N.
Nelson N, aye.
Nelson N, aye. New.
New, aye.
Nor. Nor, aye. Nornis.
Nornis, aye.
Nornis, aye. Navatney.
Navatney, aye.
Navatney, aye. O'Driscoll. O'Driscoll. Olson.
Olson, aye.
Olson, aye. O'Neal.
O'Neal, no.
O'Neal, no. Palowski.
Palowski, aye.
Palowski, aye. Purcell.
Purcell, aye.
Purcell, aye. Petersburg.
Petersburg, aye.
Petersburg, aye. Pearson.
Pearson, aye.
Pearson, aye. Pinto.
Pinto, aye.
Pinto, aye. Poppy.
Poppy, aye.
Poppy, aye. Poston.
Poston, aye.
Poston, aye. Pryor.
Pryor, aye.
Pryor, aye. Quam. Quam. Richard.
Quam, aye.
Richardson.
Richardson, aye.
Robinson.
Robinson, aye.
Robinson, aye. Sandell.
Sandell, aye.
Sandell, aye. Sansstead.
Sansstead, aye.
Sansstead, aye. Sauk.
Sauk, aye.
Sauk, aye. Schumacher.
Schumacher, aye.
Schumacher, aye. Schultz.
Schultz, aye.
Schultz, aye. Stevenson.
Stevenson, aye.
Stevenson, aye. Robbins.
Robbins, aye.
Robbins, aye. Runbeck.
Runbeck, aye.
Runbeck, aye. Sandell.
Sandell, aye.
Sandell, aye. Sansstead.
Sansstead, aye.
Sansstead, aye. Sauk.
Sauk, aye.
Sauk, aye. Schumacher.
Schumacher, aye.
Schumacher, aye. Schultz.
Schultz, aye.
Schultz, aye. Scott.
Scott, aye.
Scott, aye. Stevenson.
Stevenson, aye.
Stevenson, aye. Sundine.
Sundine, aye.
Sundine, aye. Swazinski.
Swazinski, aye.
Swazinski, aye. Tabkey.
Tabkey, aye.
Tabkey, aye. Tice.
Tice, aye.
Tice, aye. Torkelson.
Torkelson, aye.
Torkelson, aye. Erdol.
Erdol, aye.
Erdol, aye. Vang.
Vang, aye.
Vang, aye. Vogel.
Vogel, aye.
Vogel, aye. Wagenius.
Wagenius, aye.
Wagenius, aye. Wazlowick.
Wazlowick, aye.
Wazlowick, aye. West.
West, aye.
West, aye. Winkler. Winkler, aye. Wogomot. Wogomot. Zhang J.
Zhang J, aye.
Zhang J, aye. Zhang T.
Zhang T, aye.
Zhang T, aye. Yuakim.
Yuakim, aye.
Yuakim, aye. Speaker Hortman. Speaker Hortman, aye. Garofalo. Garofalo. Grunhagen. Grunhagen. Heinzmann. Heinzmann. McDonald. McDonald. O'Driscoll. O'Driscoll. Wogomot.
Wogomot, aye.
Wogomot, aye. Halverson.
Halverson, aye.
Halverson, aye. Halverson, aye. Halverson, aye. Halverson, aye. Walgomat.
Walgomat, aye.
Walgomat, aye. Vang.
Vang, aye.
Vang, aye. Vogel.
Vogel, aye.
Vogel, aye. Wagenius.
Wagenius, aye.
Wagenius, aye. Wazlowick.
Wazlowick, aye.
Wazlowick, aye. West.
West, aye.
West, aye. Winkler. Winkler, aye. Wogomot. Wogomot. Zhang J.
Zhang J, aye.
Zhang J, aye. Zhang T.
Zhang T, aye.
Zhang T, aye. Yuakim.
Yuakim, aye.
Yuakim, aye. Speaker Hortman. Speaker Hortman, aye. Garofalo. Garofalo. Grunhagen. Grunhagen. Heinzmann. Heinzmann. McDonald. McDonald. O'Driscoll. O'Driscoll. Wogomot.
Wogomot, aye.
Wogomot, aye. Halverson.
Halverson, aye.
Halverson, aye.
Halverson, aye.
Halverson, aye. Halverson, aye. Halverson, aye. Halverson, aye. Halverson, aye. Halverson, aye. Walgomat.
Walgomat, aye.
Walgomat, aye. West.
West, aye.
West, aye. Winkler. Winkler, aye. Wogomot. Wogomot. Zhang J.
Zhang J, aye.
Zhang J, aye. Zhang T.
Zhang T, aye.
Zhang T, aye. Yuakim.
Yuakim, aye.
Yuakim, aye. Speaker Hortman. Speaker Hortman, aye. Garofalo. Garofalo. Grunhagen. Grunhagen. Heinzmann. Heinzmann. McDonald. McDonald. O'Driscoll. O'Driscoll. Wogomot.
Wogomot, aye.
Wogomot, aye. Halverson. Halverson, aye. Halverson, aye. Wong. Wong, aye. Wong, aye. Lucero.
Lucero, no.
Lucero, no. Luick. Luick, aye. Mahoney.
Mahoney, aye.
Mahoney, aye. Man.
Man.
Man, aye.
Man, aye. Mariani.
Mariani, aye.
Mariani, aye. Markwart.
Markwart, aye.
Markwart, aye. Mason.
Mason, aye.
Mason, aye. McDonald. McDonald. O'Driscoll. O'Driscoll. Wogomot.
Wogomot, aye.
Wogomot, aye. Halverson.
Halverson, aye.
Halverson, aye. Halverson, aye. Halverson, aye. Halverson, aye. Halverson, aye. Halverson, aye. Halverson, aye. Halverson, aye. Halverson, aye. Halverson, aye. Halverson, aye. Halverson, aye. Halverson, aye. Halverson, aye. Halverson, aye. The motion prevails.
The Clerk will give the bill its second reading.
Second reading. House File Number 11.
Second reading. There's an amendment at the desk. The Clerk will report the amendment.
Moran moves to amend House File Number 11 as follows. The amendment is coded A1.
Representative Moran, to your bill and your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So the A1 amendment removes Article 9. This language would have authorized a 60-day extension of the emergency powers currently given to DHS beyond the end of the governor's declared peacetime emergency. Creating this ramped-down period is vital for our counties, providers, and service recipients, but at this time, it requires further discussion to reach consensus. We will work with our colleagues to find a path forward for this important provision in the days ahead. So that's, members, that's the amendment that has been removed from the bill.
Any discussion to the A1 amendment? Representative Keel.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, Representative Moran, thank you very much for removing Article 9. I appreciate that. We've had a lot of discussion about this. It does request that the governor's emergency orders would go past the ending of the emergency orders, and it would go to 60 days. I know we are still having conversation about how that works. We want to make sure that we are understanding how long that goes. Our counties are very concerned about ending things immediately. There are some services that we need to kind of ratchet back slowly, so that conversation is being had bipartisanly with our members, both here in the House and the Senate, and I really appreciate Representative Moran considering removing this, and we'll have more discussion about it later. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the A1 amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails. The amendment is adopted. There are no further amendments at the desk. The Clerk will give the bill its third reading.
Third reading. House File Number 11, as amended.
Third reading, as amended. Discussion to the bill, Representative Moran.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, House File 11 represents the work done by the Healthy Human Service Policy Committee this year in the area of human services. Senator Abler and myself and our respective staff have been working towards this bill all year, incorporating the ideas and feedback of legislators, counties, providers, and service recipients. The language before you today largely match House Senate File 9, which was on the House floor when session ended. I'm sorry, Senate File 3322, which was on the House floor when session ended. When the Healthy Human Service Policy Committee first convened in January of last year, I challenged our members to reimagine the way we provide services in Minnesota, with a particular focus on reducing disparities and preventing the need to access higher levels of service. Our committee did not disappoint. One of the benefits of putting together a policy bill like this is that when you don't have a budget target, there are no limits to the amount of good ideas you can include. Members, this bill is full of good ideas that will help Minnesotans who are either provided or receive human services. Most of this language was passed unanimously out of our committee in April, and I am proud to offer it for your consideration today. I'm going to walk through the eight articles in the bill. Article 1 contains provisions related to children and family services. It extends the sunset for the Culture and Ethnic Community Leadership Council by two years, ensuring that communities of color continue to have a voice in the decision-making process at DHS. It requires that children placed in foster care be screened for prenatal alcohol exposure and that placement agency arrange a conference call between parents and foster care providers so that they can share important information about their child, like favorite foods and activities. These steps will reduce traumas for children who are removed from their homes. The rest of Article 1 contains provisions that were heard in the Early Childhood Division, and I would like to ask Chair Pinto to be recognized to explain those parts of Article 1 of those parts of the bill in Article 1. To Chair Pinto.
Madam Speaker, and members, Article 1 contains a number of provisions.
Representative Pinto, sorry, I didn't catch that Representative Moran was looking to you. Representative Pinto.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, as I was unmuted, I thought that you might have been calling my name and that I was supposed to start, so good. I will do so now.
I want to thank all the members of the Family Childcare Task Force for their dedicated work on these issues, and thank again Chair Pinto, Senator Kiffmeyer, and the members and staff of the Early Childhood Division as well for their work.
Representative Moran.
All right, thank you, Madam Speaker. I too want to thank Chair Pinto and Representative Wazlowick and the Senate for all their hard work this session on behalf of our youngest Minnesotans and their families. Members, Article II includes several technical and policy changes to community support programs. A few highlights are that we require sexual violence prevention training for direct support staff, allow more practitioners to order home health services, provide greater flexibilities to workers in group homes, and put all applicants for self-directed caregivers grants on an equal footing. There's a few technical differences in this language from the Regular Session Bill that corrects some effective dates and ensures the new home service language aligns with what is allowed by the Federal Care Act. Article III and IV are provisions that Senator Abler has been working hard on our year, and they put our state on a path towards greater independence for Minnesotans with disabilities. This is a goal we all share as policymakers, and I want to thank Senator Abler for working with stakeholders to get this language to a place where we can all agree on the details as well as the principles. Article III says it is the policy of the state that Minnesotans with disabilities can and want to work in a competitive, integrated setting, that they can and want to live independently, and that they can and want to self-direct their services. Article IV makes several policy changes to implement this vision. It allows waivers recipients to choose who participate in their annual assessments, and requires those assessments to consider transitioning them to more independent living and employment settings. The bill also requires counties to make waivers recipients aware of every service option they are eligible for, not just the ones that their local agencies already offer. This change will help ensure that the resources available to Minnesotans with disabilities do not depend on the county where they live. And finally, this article clarifies policies for community living settings to make sure service recipients can gain and maintain ownership of their residency if they so choose. This article has been updated since the Regular Sessions to account for technical interactions with other laws passed this year. Article V contains several policy proposals from the Department of Human Services that were vetted in committee. I specifically want to bring members' attention to the language throughout this article that will bring Minnesota into conformity with the Family First Prevention Services Act. These changes will secure new federal dollars for counties and allow them to take a more prevention-oriented approach to child protection services. This will keep more children living safely at home with their families rather than experiencing the trauma of removal and foster care. I want to thank Representative Noor for working with mental health advocates to address their concerns and make sure this important legislation is passed on schedule. The next two articles of bills are very long and mostly technical. Article VI comes from a bill authored by Representative Edelson that reorganizes the state civic commitment statutes and makes a few policy changes recommended by a wide coalition of advocates, practitioners, counties, and state agencies. Article VII and VIII are recommendations from the Governor's Task Force all the way back in 2015 to reorganize the State Maltreatment of Minors Act. Representative Kresha has been carrying this bill for four years, and I am happy that we can finally get her across the finish line for him and everyone else who worked on this project. So, members, that is the bill, and I would stand for questions, and I encourage a green vote.
Representative Haley.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members. I just want to make some short comments. First of all, thank you for a provision in this bill that Representative Akom Chief authored, and I appreciate Chair Moran's support of this as well as Minority Lead Keel's support to get this provision included and across the finish line. You know, members, we all come to this work, I think, with a sincere desire to help people across the state of Minnesota, and oftentimes, we get very personal and specific issues brought to us from families that we represent. I have one such case, and I just thought you'd want to hear it, because this passage of this bill will make a significant impact to a family in my district. Mr. Pea, I met him a number of months ago. He's 87 years old. He and his late wife had eight children, four of which were disabled. Two of his disabled daughters are still alive, and their names are Suzanne and Christine. And Suzanne and Christine have lived together for 30 years. With Mr. Pea's age, the rest of the family members, they're a very tight-knit family, they all decided to move back to Minnesota so they could support their father and be close to their two sisters. Unfortunately, with our current law, there wasn't room in a home for the sisters to continue living together. With passage of this bill, it's called the Five Bed Rule, they will be allowed to reside together in a home in Wabashaw, close to their father and close to their other siblings. So, I just thought that you would appreciate that story and know that you're making a very big difference for Suzanne and Christine this evening. Thank you, members, for a yes vote.
Any further discussion to the bill? Hearing no further discussion, the clerk will take the role on the bill.
Akam.
Akam, aye.
Akam, aye. Albright. Albright, aye. Anderson.
Anderson, aye.
Anderson, aye. Backer.
Backer, aye.
Backer, aye. Bonner.
Bonner, aye.
Bonner, aye. Barr.
Barr, no.
Barr, no. Baker.
Baker, aye.
Baker, aye. Becker Finn. Becker Finn, aye. Bennett.
Bennett, aye.
Bennett, aye. Bernardi.
Bernardi, aye.
Bernardi, aye. Bierman.
Bierman, aye.
Bierman, aye. Bo.
Bo, aye.
Bo, aye. Brand.
Brand votes yes.
Brand, aye. Cantrell.
Cantrell, aye.
Cantrell, aye. Carlson A.
Carlson A, aye.
Carlson A, aye. Carlson L.
Carlson L.
Carlson L, aye. Christensen.
Christensen, aye.
Christensen, aye. Claflin.
Claflin, aye.
Claflin, aye. Considine.
Considine, aye.
Considine, aye. Daniels.
Daniels, aye.
Daniels, aye. Dowd. Dowd, aye. Davids.
Davids, aye.
Davids, aye. Daphne.
Daphne, aye.
Daphne, aye. Dean.
Dean, aye.
Dean, aye. Damuth. Damuth, aye. Detmer.
Detmer, aye.
Detmer, aye. Dreskowski. Dreskowski, no. Eklund.
Eklund, aye.
Eklund, aye. Edelson.
Edelson, aye.
Edelson, aye. Elkins.
Elkins, aye.
Elkins, aye. Erickson.
Erickson, aye.
Erickson, aye. Fabian. Excused. Fisher.
Fisher, aye.
Fisher, aye. Franzen. Franzen, aye. Freiberg.
Freiberg, aye.
Freiberg, aye. Garofalo.
Garofalo, aye.
Garofalo, aye. Gomez.
Gomez, aye.
Gomez, aye. Green.
Green, aye.
Green, aye. Grassel.
Grassel, aye.
Grassel, aye. Grunhagen. Grunhagen. Gunther.
Gunther, aye.
Gunther, aye. Haley. Haley, aye. Halverson.
Halverson, aye.
Halverson, aye. Hamilton.
Hamilton, aye.
Hamilton, aye. Hanson.
Hanson, aye.
Hanson, aye. Hassan.
Hassan, aye.
Hassan, aye. Hausman.
Hausman, aye.
Hausman, aye. Heinrich.
Heinrich, aye.
Heinrich, aye. Heinzmann. Heinzmann. Herr.
Herr, aye.
Herr, aye. Hurtas.
Hurtas, aye.
Hurtas, aye. Hornstein.
Hornstein, aye.
Hornstein, aye. Howard.
Howard, aye.
Howard, aye. Hewitt.
Hewitt, aye.
Hewitt, aye. Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Johnson, aye. Jordan.
Jordan, aye.
Jordan, aye. Jurgens.
Jurgens, aye.
Jurgens, aye. Keel. Keel, aye. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, aye.
Cleavorn, aye. Cagle.
Cagle, aye.
Cagle, aye. Katiza Waton.
Katiza Waton, aye.
Katiza Waton, aye. Koznick.
Koznick, aye.
Koznick, aye. Kresha.
Kresha, aye.
Kresha, aye. Kunish Podine.
Kunish Podine, aye.
Kunish Podine, aye. Lehman.
Lehman, aye.
Lehman, aye. Lee.
Lee, aye.
Lee, aye. Lesch.
Lesch, aye.
Lesch, aye. Liebling, excused. Lean.
Lean, aye.
Lean, aye. Lilly.
Lilly, aye.
Lilly, aye. Lippert.
Lippert, aye.
Lippert, aye. Listlegard.
Listlegard, aye.
Listlegard, aye. Long.
Long, aye.
Long, aye. Lucero.
Lucero, no.
Lucero, no. Luick. Luick, aye. Mahoney.
Mahoney, aye.
Mahoney, aye. Mann.
Mann, aye.
Mann, aye. Mariani. Mariani.
Mariani, aye.
Mariani, aye. Markwart.
Markwart, aye.
Markwart, aye. Mason.
Mason, aye.
Mason, aye. McDonald.
McDonald, aye.
McDonald, aye. Mecklen. Mecklen. Miller.
Miller, no.
Miller, no. Moeller.
Moeller, aye.
Moeller, aye. Moran.
Moran, aye.
Moran, aye. Morrison.
Morrison, aye.
Morrison, aye. Munson.
Munson, no.
Munson, no. Murphy.
Murphy, aye.
Murphy, aye. Nash. Nash, aye. Nelson M.
Nelson M, aye.
Nelson M, aye. Nelson N.
Nelson N, aye.
Nelson N, aye. New. New, aye. Noor. Noor, aye. Nornis.
Nornis, aye.
Nornis, aye. Navatni.
Navatni, aye.
Navatni, aye. O'Driscoll.
O'Driscoll, aye.
O'Driscoll, aye. Olson.
Olson, aye.
Olson, aye. O'Neill.
O'Neill, aye.
O'Neill, aye. Palowski.
Palowski, aye.
Palowski, aye. Purcell.
Purcell, aye.
Purcell, aye. Petersburg.
Petersburg, aye.
Petersburg, aye. Pearson.
Pearson, aye.
Pearson, aye. Pinto.
Pinto, aye.
Pinto, aye. Poppy.
Poppy, aye.
Poppy, aye. Poston.
Poston, aye.
Poston, aye. Pryor.
Pryor, aye.
Pryor, aye. Quam.
Quam, aye.
Quam, aye. Richardson.
Richardson, aye.
Richardson, aye. Robbins. Robbins, aye. Runbeck.
Runbeck, aye.
Runbeck, aye. Sandell.
Sandell, aye.
Sandell, aye. Sanstead.
Sanstead, aye.
Sanstead, aye. Sauk.
Sauk, aye.
Sauk, aye. Schumacher.
Schumacher, aye.
Schumacher, aye. Schultz.
Schultz, aye.
Schultz, aye. Scott.
Scott, aye.
Scott, aye. Stevenson.
Stevenson, aye.
Stevenson, aye. Sundine.
Sundine, aye.
Sundine, aye. Swazinski.
Swazinski, aye.
Swazinski, aye. Tabke.
Tabke, aye.
Tabke, aye. Tice.
Tice, aye.
Tice, aye. Torkelson.
Wait, just wait.
Torkelson, aye.
Torkelson, aye. Erdol. Erdol.
Erdol, aye.
Erdol, aye. Vang.
Vang, aye.
Vang, aye. Vogel.
Vogel, aye.
Vogel, aye. Wagenius.
Wagenius, aye.
Wagenius, aye. Wazlowick.
Wazlowick, aye.
Wazlowick, aye. West.
West, aye.
West, aye. Winkler. Winkler, aye. Walgamot.
Walgamot, aye.
Walgamot, aye. Jong J.
Jong J, aye.
Jong J, aye. Jong T.
Jong T, aye.
Jong T, aye. Yuakim.
Yuakim, aye.
Yuakim, aye. Speaker Hartman. Speaker Hartman, aye. Grunhagen. Grunhagen. Heinzmann. Heinzmann. Mecklen. Mecklen.
Mecklen, no.
Mecklen, no.
There being 124 ayes and 6 nays, the bill is passed as amended and its title agreed to. I neglected to go to Representative Moran for closing comments. Representative Moran.
I'm saying thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just want to close by saying thank you to members for the passage of this bill. I wanted to take just one more moment to thank everyone who helped put this bill together and who made the Health and Human Service Policy Committee such a great experience for me as a first-time chair. First, I want to say thank you to Senator Abler and his staff. Working on this bill was still was a very positive and collaborative experience. The final product merged my own passion for children and family services with Senator Abler's passion for disability services to form a comprehensive, well-rounded bill. I want to say thank you to the House and Senate nonpartisan staff who have worked countless of hours over the past few months to put together a bill that captured the goals of both bodies. Thank you to our committee researchers, Joe Durham and Jeremiah Winzick, both of my committee legislative assistants, DeSvianum, Alyssa Fritz, and Jazzy DiMiglio. And most importantly, just want to say thank you to Chris McCall, who has been absolutely joy to work with, who is a professional at all levels. He's just an excellent C.A. Just want to say thank you really for helping me and us do our work. And most of all, thank you to the countless Minnesotans who brought their stories to our committee so we can learn from you and respond to your needs. This bill was written by you. This bill is for you. And I just again just want to say thank you all for your support of this bill. It is going to really help a lot of Minnesotans in their lives every day. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Yes, my apologies for not going to you for a closing statement.
Okay.
Members, I think we have no further motions and resolutions before us. If there's no further motions or resolutions, we will go to announcements. Representative Moran.
Me. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to do a point of personal privilege.
State your point of personal privilege.
Madam Speaker, I would like to take a few moments along with a few of my colleagues, Representative Noor, Representative Hassan, and Representative Richardson, to do some final remarks around George Floyd. Should I proceed?
Yes, ma'am. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So, you know, we thought about George Floyd, and what we remember so often is about that video that we saw of him with the police officer on his neck taking his last breath. But I don't want that to be all that we know about George Floyd. We don't want that to be all that you know. We want you to see George as a human being. So, I'm going to make a few remarks about that. The death of George Floyd at the hands of Minneapolis police officer on May 21, 2020 displayed a distressing lack of humanity and demonstrated the desperate, racist, and unjust treatment of an African-American man, a descendant of slaves who were once powerful warrior kings and queens back in our motherland in Africa. Mr. Floyd was born in Fayetteville, North Carolina, through George Perry and Lucinda Floyd. Mr. George Floyd was a father, a son, a brother, a cousin, and friend to many. As a teenager, George Floyd was a tall, regocious, star athlete who at 17 years old dreamed of touching the world in the NBA or the NFL. Mr. Floyd, who was 46, was more than the nearly nine-minute graphic video of his death. He was more than the 16 utterances captured in the recording of some version of "I Can't Breathe." Mr. Floyd saw sports as the path out of Houston, a part of Houston that they called the bricks. And so, he leaned into his size and athletic prowess in a sports-assessed state. As a tight end, Mr. Floyd helped power his football team to the state championship game in 1992. Growing up in one of Houston's poorest neighborhoods, he enjoyed a star turn as a basketball and football player, with three catches for 18 yards in the state championship game his junior year. He was the first of his siblings to go to college, and he did so on an athletic scholarship. As a child, Mr. Floyd was known in the brick part of Houston as Perry, his Miller name. And as he grew, so too did his nickname. He was Big Floyd, known as much for his big personality and his sense of humor. For Floyd's height, he was more than six feet tall in Miller school, which could create a kind of mystique about him. He was a jokester, always laughing, always cracking jokes. Mr. Floyd kept a Bible by his bed here in Minnesota. Often, he read it aloud. And despite his height, Mr. Floyd would fold himself in the hallway of the building that he lived in and frequently pray with Teresa Scott, one of his roommates. That's a little bit about Floyd that I wanted to share with everyone. And with that, I would like to yield to Representative Noor.
Representative Noor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. We are all deeply saddened, truly pained, and angered by the events that took place in our city. The death of George Floyd in the hands of Minneapolis police. From the video that we've all watched, his life was taken away slowly, suffocated with a knee on his neck. Several times, he said, "I cannot breathe." In fact, 16 times, he could not breathe. He said, "Please." He called for his mama, who is no longer with us. The pain and suffering that he has endured is what many people who look like me, many people who feel that they don't belong. Quite frankly, that could have been me. It could also be my two sons, who have to grow in the same environment that we live in today. They call him Big Floyd. His family also know him by Perry. We all mourn the loss of George Floyd, with his family, with friends, with Minnesotans, with the world. No one should ever feel powerless. No one should ever feel that their life is not valued. But that's what the system tells many of the Black, Brown, Indigenous, and people of color. People are sick and tired of being sick and tired. People have had enough. Minnesotans want equal justice under the law. Minnesotans need equal justice under the law. Minnesotans demand equal justice under the law. We must not ignore the underlying problem that our communities feel powerless in the face of a system that has never worked for them. Let's not pretend the system is fair. Everyone of us must be part of that solution. The time is now for us to stand up and say that we will never see an incident like that in the state of Minnesota. The world is watching us. Minnesotans are asking us to act. Thank you so much, Madam Speaker.
Representative Hassan.
Black lives. Madam Speaker and members, black lives matter. Black lives matter. Black lives do matter. I don't know who needs to hear this, but I'm saying it out loud. My life matters. So do millions of Americans from African descent, whose lives are jeopardized by an oppressive system that doesn't see as worthy of being treated with basic human decency. We recite the Pledge of Allegiance before session starts every time, and the words "One Nation Under God, Indivisible with Liberty and Justice for All" come to mind. Isn't it ironic that my Black community have never been treated equal? From 400 years ago till today, we're still waiting for equal treatment under the eyes of the law. Police brutality is an everyday thing for Black communities, as many deaths go unrecognized. But here are some names to refresh our memories of those who were officially murdered without a cause: Sandra Bland, Travan Martin, Eric Garner, Michael Brown, Tamir Rice, Jordan Davis, Alton Sterling, Kristen Cooper, Philando Castillo, Amadio Diallo, Walter Scott, Oscar Grant, Ayanna Jones, Marquise Jones, Estha Ford, Jamar Clark, Isaac Adden, Breonna Taylor, Ahmud Arbery, and recently, George Floyd, and many more. This may be just a list of names to some of you, but to their families, they were precious loved ones. It pains me to speak today about George Floyd's murder, yet another black life taken too soon in the hands of police. This was the most horrific eight minutes and 46 seconds of anything I have ever seen. Mind you, I am from a war-torn country, and I thought I had seen it all as a kid fleeing away from war. George Floyd was a man who touched many lives, and his tragic death touched millions around the globe. He was a son, a brother, a father, and athlete who was good at basketball and football, and a fellow human being. Despite all the hardships and lack of opportunities, he lived a life filled with love and laughter. He was a Black man in America, and that was his only crime. What we witnessed was injustice and cruelty as George Floyd gasped for air for eight minutes and 46 seconds and called out for his mama in his last moments. His death is a national tragedy and disgrace that the people that were meant to keep us safe are the ones that are harming Black bodies. Black people are tired of being treated as subhumans. The uprising that we see around the world, around the nation, around the state, is demanding justice, an end to police cruelty and brutality. As the wise words of Dr. King echoed once, "An injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." This fight for justice is not about Black versus white, minority versus majority, or liberal versus conservative. It's about right versus wrong, and it's about humanity. We should all be on the right side and on the side of humanity. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Representative Richardson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
under the cover of darkness when cameras are not around? George Floyd was being accused of a $20 forgery, and he was murdered. Eric Garner was being accused of selling loose cigarettes, and he was murdered. Philando Castillo was stopped and being accused of having a broken tail light, and she was murdered. Compare that with a white supremacist who walked into the African Methodist Church in Charlottesville in 2015, where he prayed with people and then shot nine people at point blank range. Accused of murdering nine people, he was treated to burglary by his arresting officers. Some in power have said the murder of George Floyd is an isolated incident. If you believe this, then you're not paying attention. Some in power have said that this has nothing to do with race. This has nothing to do with racism. If you believe that, then you're not paying attention. Our communities are crying out for all of us to pay attention. Our communities are crying out for all of us to listen and for all of us to actively fight against racism. Our communities are crying out for justice. Members, each of us will have to decide what we are going to do in this moment. What are we going to do to fight against racism? What are we going to do to fight against anti-Blackness? Each of us will have to decide. Each of us will have to make a determination about what side of history we will be on. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, members. Any further announcements? Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, I move that when the House adjourns today, it adjourns until 12 noon, Monday, June 15, 2020.
Representative Winkler moves that when the House adjourns today, it adjourns until 12 noon, Monday, June 15, 2020. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails. Representative Winkler.